Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada, or the Arvada City Council for the April 26, 2021 workshop, and calling Kristen Rush for a roll call.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Mr. Pfeiffer, did you wish to speak?
No problem.
Okay, we have three workshops tonight. We're going to begin with the Charter Review Committee. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's my absolute pleasure to introduce the person who headed the Charter Review Committee, and that's former councilmember Mark McGough.
Mr. McGough, thank you for taking on this duty. Looks like you did admirally. Let's, let's hear what you got to say.
I think we had a really fine committee. So, good evening, Mayor Williams and members of council. I'm pleased to be here to present the final report of the 2021 Arvada City Charter Committee. Several members of, I'd hope that several members would be here, but we have one member, Lisa Smith, who is here, who will assist me in responding to any questions that come up later. Before I start too, I'd like to really thank the staff. As we got going, I asked that we have one person to kind of give the general direction and to assign staff to this project. That was Lori Gillis, Deputy City Manager. And I thank you, Lori, for the contributions you made there. Kristen Rush as City Clerk also contributed significantly with reference materials and just being available for any kinds of questions as we went. And of course, Rachel Morris as City Attorney sat in on all of our meetings and provided great insight as well as legal perspective. And finally, Barb Morgen, who did an outstanding job, you know, she was the one who handled all correspondence for the committee. Anything that happened went through her. She also prepared all the summaries of meetings. She prepared the agendas. She prepared all the documents. And finally, she put together the, the book that we have, the booklet of materials. I might mention something about the, the length of this report. It's about 93 pages. That's not because we wanted to lengthen it so much, but just simply so that we would have in one place all of the documents that related to this charter review, since as you know, we only look at it in a comprehensive matter, manner every 10 years. So 10 years from now, I'm hoping that whoever is on the charter committee can pull out this document and they'll have everything that we had, all the work papers and everything, so they can just look back at and see what we have done. We've been a very engaged and productive committee throughout the four meetings, two in February, two in March. We had 20 people in the committee, 10 men and 10 women. Quite different from the two charter committees I served on before in 2001 and 2011, where there was a disproportionate number of men on the committee, very few women. We had a really good attendance at all the meetings, basically 100%, except for a few things like people needing to attend to some family issues. So we had very good attendance and very good participation. All the, all the participation discussion was, you know, very spirited and very informative. So I thank the committee, thanks to council for your appointments to the committee. You did a great job in selecting people to serve. As you know, Arvada became a home rule city in 1963. Prior to that time, our city was governed by state law only. Since 1963, our charter has been amended and updated several times, always, of course, by a vote of our citizens. A very major update occurred in 1991. Many of our current charter provisions were approved by voters that year. Most significant to my mind was section 13-13, which states, "Commencing in the year 2001 and every 10 years thereafter, the city council shall appoint a charter review committee for the purpose of performing a comprehensive review of this charter and for making recommendations to city council for amendments, deletions, or other changes to the charter, and submitting the same in writing to the city council." This provision is unique to our charter. In preparation for serving as Chair of the Charter Review Committee, I thoroughly read more than 25 charters from cities in Colorado, and I found no similar provision for a comprehensive review in any of them. Also, my study of the charters has informed me that our charter is concise, very clean, and devoid of administrative clutter, such as, and these are actual examples from other charters, declaring the minimum width of streets, declaring the maximum height of buildings, delineation of police ranks, and establishing of specific positions in the charter, or in one case, the specific ratio of police officers to the population. Our charter really empowers rather than limits our city council and our city operations. In my judgment, the skeleton of our city government is truly sound. The council identified eight issues for the committee to consider. Several additional issues arose, arose and were identified by committee members. The committee report that you have received details each of these issues and provides you with the summaries of the discussion of them. Tonight, it's my intent just to provide a general overview of the committee's recommendations. I'll welcome any questions or need for clarification at any point in the presentation.
Mr. McGough, if I could jump in here, I just wanted council and you to be aware, most of the Charter Review Committee is online Zoom, joined this meeting. So they followed you all the way through the process and all the way here.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I'll add one other thing. Once the council decides over the next month or two which issues they wish to refer to the ballot, many members of the Charter Review Committee stand ready to assist in the education of our citizens to the issues that you select for the, for the ballot in the fall. Okay, so I think we're ready for the, the slides, if we can go ahead with those. Oh, we're all set? Okay, so we can go to next slide, of course. Okay, and here's the city council identified issues. I guess I may be the only one who won't be able to read these, but section 13-13 is the, boy, that's difficult to read from here.
Ms. Gillis is going to assist you as she has throughout the process.
Okay, thank you. This will be great. I didn't think to have a copy with me, so thank you, Lori. Yeah, section 13-13, "All conveyances of interest in land by the city shall be signed by the mayor or mayor pro tem and attested by the city clerk under the seal of the city." This issue is one that it just simply spells out in the charter a requirement that, as it says, "Any land conveyances be signed and attested to, et cetera." And the committee likened it to our provision in chapter 13 of intergovernmental agreements. After the last charter review in 2011, the recommendation to the council, and it appeared then on the ballot, was to let that be defined by ordinance and procedure rather than being enshrined in the charter. So our recommendation to the council is, yes, let's, let's not leave that in the charter. It's a fairly small item, but sometimes there can be a, of timing, and it can be better that if, you can just set up an ordinance to deal with the various kinds of land transfers that may occur. So the recommendation of the, of the committee is to just establish the authority and procedures by ordinance for dealing with land transfers. The second item that the council referred to us was that the terms of office for, and mayor for the, and the council members elected in a municipal election shall be commenced at the first regular meeting following the election. We looked at this a couple of different times in the, in our committee sessions. At the first meeting, or the first time we talked about this, we said, okay, here's the problem. What if there's a contested election? What if there's a need for a recount? Just if the, if for some reason the election is not settled, right now, our practice has been, election on a Tuesday, take office the next Monday. And it could be too soon. So the first time the committee looked at this, we said, how about just making it at the second meeting instead of the first meeting? When we came back to this in our third or fourth meeting, we took a look at this more closely, and we recommend creating charter language to address the beginning of a council term in the event of an incomplete, inconclusive vote, or a need for a recount of the vote. And that could be, so, that could be, for example, the city of Boulder has a specific provision that says, if there's a contested election or an inconclusive vote, that what they'll do is wait for the swearing in of that person until that is, until that vote is settled, and then they will have a swearing in, like on the following day on that. So they, they won't wait for the next council meeting. They'll just do it the following day. So we're not suggesting any particular language to the council, but rather just to say, you know, make some provision in the charter for a contested election or an inconclusive vote. As you recall, we, we've never had that problem, but some cities around have had that problem. And this would be a good preemptive strike, we feel, to just get some language in there to say, what shall we do? And that will, of course, fall to the city attorney to come up with the right language for you.
I frankly like that choice of addressing if there is, you know, a contested or inconclusive vote, better than having the new council sworn in at the second regular meeting, because I'm a little worried about what the outgoing council might do in that week in between.
Well, and there's also the issue of inconclusive vote, if a recount has to happen, or if, God forbid, it becomes a court proceeding or something like that. Another week probably doesn't solve it anyway.
Right.
That, that, you know, one, one week doesn't help, so.
And the other thing too, that I'm sure you recognize, is that some of that could be handled just administratively, is just by whatever you would be on the agenda for the meeting following the election, that you would have a major land use issue on there just in case. So it could be handled administratively, not dealing with the charter at all. But it's important to, and the other points here, to say, we did have some discussion about, should we have, should we, should we require the winner of a council election to have a majority of the vote? And of course, that would entail runoff elections in case we had, we didn't have a majority of the vote. And the consensus of the committee at the end was to say, no, don't amend the charter to require a majority vote. We're doing okay. I didn't bring the figures with me, but taking a look at the last elections over the past 30 years, almost, 75% of them have been settled by majority vote. We've been represented well by even those elections where there has not been a majority vote. So the recommendation of the council, do not change that. But the committee also asks, give some consideration to requiring a majority vote for the mayor, either by runoff or ranked choice voting, but something that would save for the mayor. And the discussion, and I, Mr. Marriott and, or Ms. Simpson can also comment on this from their participation in the discussion. Basically, the council, the committee was saying, the mayor's position is extremely important. And what if, when our current mayor goes out of office in November '23, what if we had four or five candidates for the position of mayor, all without any particular experience with the council or whatever, but just simply a very large number stepping forward? It could mean that the next mayor could be elected with a quarter of the vote, 25% of the vote. And is that something we want for the position of mayor? So again, the committee did not come to a recommendation of that, that was not a question posed to us, but it wasn't, it came up in the discussion, saying, consider that. Consider that, and consider the mayor's position different from those, from the council positions when it comes to election. Okay?
Some discussion on that?
Yes. So my recollection was that the majority of the group did feel that the mayor's position was too important, particularly with an open mayor's seat coming up in 2023. So it was fairly closely divided on whether we wanted ranked choice voting or a runoff. Perhaps Ms. Smith remembers since she, okay, Lisa, come on up then.
Yep.
If, if, that's okay, just called her up. If she still has the poll numbers, because I remember it was fairly closely divided with runoff winning by a few votes. Do we have those numbers?
Yes, but there was not a strong recommendation that the, the initial question be considered. There was just, consider that, and then if that were considered, then it was fairly even as to whether it would be by, by runoff or by ranked choice. But again, when we got into our discussion of ranked choice voting, we recognized that there's some effort in the state legislature to come up with some ranked choice voting, some legislation related to that. And so we did not pursue that to go down that path further. So basically, the concept, the concept that was approved seemed to be endorsed by the committee is, give that some consideration as you look at issues to go before the ballot. We don't have specific language for you, but just give that some thought. Okay?
Mr. Pfeiffer, did you want to chime in? You, you did, and then you took it off.
Well, the reason why is, I was like, well, what makes the mayor so important?
Yeah, exactly.
But.
I was going to say the same thing.
Well, because, I mean, if you want to go into the tactical perspective, he's, he emcees the meeting. He has no more votes than us.
Right.
And he's our voice when talking to the public or the media. But beyond that, there is no other, he doesn't have a flying helicopter that brings him here. He doesn't have a mansion. He doesn't have anything else. So I get that there is a, maybe an anecdotal or a subjective view that the mayor may influence maybe some direction of the city in some way or another, but technically, he doesn't. And so I'm trying to understand why should the mayor be special in an election when there's no more empowerment? This is not a strong mayor city. So trying to follow the rationale behind that. And maybe Lauren or John or somebody else can weigh in, or Lisa?
John wants to chime in, and boy, Mr. Pfeiffer, my thoughts are very similar on that.
Yeah. So, so my recollection of the discussions within the committee, it started with a discussion about, should council members have to be elected by a majority, which would mean, if there were four candidates, nobody would get a majority, and so you'd need to either conduct runoffs or instant runoffs, sometimes they call it ranked choice voting, or some other, some other method. And, and the committee was, you know, split on that. It wasn't like everybody said, no, we don't care, or yes, we do. It was, it was split nearly 50-50 or close, somewhere in there. The, when it was talked about, about the same terms for mayor, it was split again narrowly, but maybe slightly narrowly the other way. So there wasn't, there wasn't a strong recommendation necessarily that, that a mayor should gain a majority of the votes. We also talked, or the committee talked about, you know, different strategies for running, for runoffs and the pluses and minuses for those. And of course, the minuses are, it takes a while, and it's, and it's expensive. You know, that's a, an election that city clerk would have to conduct themselves, or hire an outside firm to do for us, and it wouldn't be part of a county thing. And, and so of course, that's expensive, and it would take time. We would essentially be without a mayor, or have a lame duck mayor for some period of time. And so in considering all those things, I would say that the action by the committee was inconclusive. And basically, the committee turned it back to the council to say, we don't feel strongly one way or another on any of these items, so it's something, something for you on the council to consider, was, was really my recollection. Lauren, you might think differently, but.
No, I, I remember pretty much along the same lines. And one of the ideas, I believe it was Brett Vernon who came up with it, but I, I thought this was an interesting idea, was maybe setting a threshold below 50%, like 40% or 45% or something. There were some members of the committee who felt very strongly that we should have, you know, a certain, at least if not a majority, at least near majority threshold in, for the mayor's position, even though technically the mayor has the same vote, vote the other seven do. There's a sort of, not just ceremonial, but prestigious role for outside the city, speaking on behalf of the city, et cetera. And so do we want a mayor that wins with 25% of the vote, and maybe 75% of the people don't have confidence? And that was the argument some made. So then that was one of the compromise ideas, was do we maybe set a threshold that's like 40% or something? That still gets us close enough to that majority threshold to where you don't necessarily run a runoff election just because you had three candidates in a race, or something like that, if there was a clear winner.
Yeah, that was part of the discussion, but again, of course, that didn't come to you in the recommendation. The recommendation is just simply, give that some consideration because at least, and it was only something like nine out of the 16 members who voted on that, who said, we ought to have a majority vote for mayor. So not, there's no predominant vote there, no predominant feeling that that ought to be, but just to say, give that some consideration, that there may be some difference in what the threshold we wish to have for mayor, different from what we have for a council member. So.
Yeah, I personally don't like the concept of runoff elections because of the cost, not only to the city, but to the candidates. And typically, at least I think, what I've seen in the past is that you don't get as much participation in a, in a runoff election.
It's true.
So I lean toward, you know, it's not going to affect me. I am done. And so I cut, and of course, I'm old fashioned. I like the way things are now. I'm not a big fan of the, what's it called, the extra voting, the, the.
Ranked choice.
Ranked choice. I think it's, it's fraught with the possibility, and I think it hurts incumbents more than it hurts others, because I see the potential for gaming up against a particular candidate with, with ranked choice voting.
Yeah. So, Mark, I have similar observations. I, you know, in my observing local political races all around the region, I haven't ever seen a runoff change in outcome, that whether it's in the city of Denver, the city of Wheat Ridge, different places where I've observed several runoffs or a number of runoffs, whoever got the most votes in the general election won the runoff.
Runoff.
Runoff as well.
Georgia recently had a flip where Kelly Loeffler came out of the primary, but Warnock won the runoff.
But that's different than local city elections in our, in our region. So, so that's one. Number two, I, I worry about runoffs because the cost, but also the disadvantage to some candidates. You know, some candidates who have the ability to more fully fund campaigns certainly gain an advantage in a runoff election over somebody who may have used all their assets in getting to the general election. And so I think I've got that worry. I also, you know, the, the cost to it, to the city, I think, is an issue. The time is an issue. And then when you get to the instant runoff mechanisms, I agree with that. I also, as we found out, that, you know, the county doesn't do instant runoff or ranked choice voting in the coordinated elections. That changes, changes the whole ballgame, because if you've got that as a component of your election, you basically have to run that election yourself, or hire a private company to do that. And, and so again, that's a bunch of costs to the city when you're not, not able to be on the coordinated ballot. And, and also confusing, I remember an issue some years ago, a few years ago, where the fire department had an issue at the same time there was a coordinated ballot, and people were tremendously confused about how to vote on where and where their votes came from. And so it, it just seems like for, to, to, there are solutions for problems we currently we don't have and haven't had, and they all have some really big pitfalls. So I, I lean very hard away from them as well, and feel like, you know, the way we have it has worked really good for a really long time, and I would continue with what we're doing.
Any others? What's going to be the process in terms of, how are we going to vote up or down in terms of what we're going to put on the ballot, and when's that going to happen?
I think we would be looking for a direction from you tonight, and to maybe bring something back for you to act on, based on your direction tonight.
If I could have just mentioned what, what occurred 10 years ago, after the Charter Review Committee report was delivered, the council took it under consideration, and I don't think it was till August, but the council then decided which issues were going to be on the ballot. You referred to the committee, eight issues. You may decide, for example, to refer two, three, four to the ballot, whatever might be enough of a plate full for the, for the voters, and ones that can be easily explained. And so that will be done in the sequence of things to be, probably by August, so that there's plenty of time for public education about those issues, et cetera. So about 90 days ahead of time. And so what our committee would hope is that you'll just take these under advisement, talk to the city attorney, and say, these are the issues we want on the ballot. Then the city attorney's office and other staff will come up with the, with the wording and propose those to you. So that's the usual procedure.
Yeah, Mr. Devon, I'm a little uncomfortable with thinking that we've got to give you specific direction tonight, so.
Me too. Yeah. I, I would, I would not think so, and that wouldn't be consistent with the history of the last two that have happened. It's just simply.
Mr. Devon, I know that you always want to push us to making quick decisions and, and moving things along quickly, but this is one where we want to take a little bit of time. Thank you, Ms. Miller, for that editorial comment. Next.
Okay. The, the next one is, to my mind, a very small one, an issue brought up by, I think, a single person in the last election, and that's because of the particular wording of the charter. The charter says that for recall, signature requirement, it's got to be at least 25% of the registered voters voting, or the registered electors voting for all the candidates in the last election. Well, think about those words. No registered electors vote for all the candidates. You only vote for one. I think the intent is very clear, but this was brought up by somebody who would like to change it to, so there could be absolutely no misunderstanding, and that would be to read, that would require at least 25% of the number of votes cast for all the candidates. It's never been a problem in years past. I, for myself, I don't see how there could be much misunderstanding of it, and I'm not sure that you would want to take up one of your ballot spots with the change of, of language, but that's what it is.
So I recall our city attorney actually referred this one to us as a recommendation to clean it up, simply because we did have a resident. Try to use the ambiguity in the language for a political means. And so we just wanted to clarify so that the intention of the language was very specific. If Ms. Morris wants to weigh in, I would be happy to yield to her.
Of course, of course. So I think Councilmember Simpson described it perfectly in that we had an issue that came, that was brought to my attention related to this particular language, and how the wording might be perceived by some. So I went through and I looked at charters from a number of other similar sized cities, and looked at how they phrased that particular concept, and made a recommendation for the amend language that you see on your screen now, based on that review and research.
I think the question here is going to be, how many issues do we want to put on the ballot? Because I think there could be some ballot fatigue if we put a whole bunch. So I think, yeah, that makes perfect sense as to why we might want to, to amend the charter, to clean that up a little bit, but let's just see how many issues we're going to have going forward, would be my, my sense. Because if we have 22, at some point, there are some people that are going to say, boy, if the city wants to do all these, then I'm going to vote against all of them.
Yeah, maybe put a pin in that one, and then see what, where the order of priorities lay. lay.
Right, right.
Okay, the next slide, please. This is a holdover provision that was referred to the voters in 2011. At section 4.3, that states, no council member, including the mayor, shall be a salaried employee of the city, nor any other municipality during his or her term in office. The recommendation of the committee is to delete the highlighted language, which is "nor any other municipality." The issue really is that people can be members of the city council if they work for the fire district, the Apex District, the county of Jefferson, or Adams County, or any other county, but not if they work for another municipality. We were advised in 2011 that this provision, that somebody would be precluded from council service because of being an employee of another municipality, would likely not withstand court scrutiny. The council referred it to the voters, and it was defeated 2 to 1, which led us to believe at the time, and I still believe, that there was not much of an education effort put into that. But at any rate, the committee is, in effect, bringing it back to you once again to say, this is one that, of course, will be settled if somebody should decide to, as an employee of another municipality, decide to run, or run, be elected, and then denied the seat because of working for the municipality, then the court would very likely rule against this. That was our advice in 2011. The voters did not see it that way, so the committee is saying, perhaps you'll want to take a look at that again, to preclude having a problem in the future. Okay, the next slide, please. This has to do with council compensation, and as you know, it says now, the members of the city council shall receive such compensation as the city council shall by ordinance prescribe. Well, that's the way it's written in virtually every charter, but not all, but close to all the charters, that it's always by ordinance. However, there's some feeling that we might have something specified in the charter to just simply say that effective at some future date, and the date we kind of settled on was after the election of 2023, that there would be a specified compensation, and then permitting adjustments thereafter in accordance with the Consumer Price Index. So, even if the council salary were to be established in the charter as being exactly the same as it is today, the compensation then would be, could be adjusted according to the Consumer Price Index from that point on. But this charter provision would invite the council, or invite the public, really, to approve charter language, to say, here's the compensation, and then it can be adjusted by the CPI thereafter.
Yeah, I guess my thought on that is that the city council, like a lot of other city councils, is frankly underpaid for the amount of time that they've put in. I don't think any of us served because of the amount of compensation we received, certainly, but there's always going to be a hesitancy of city councils to be perceived as voting themselves an increase in pay, and I think that there should be some mechanism to make it a little bit more equitable, and frankly, to some extent, to attract people who, you know, would be willing to serve if the compensation were somewhat higher. I mean, it's been, how many years since we've increased?
I think it's been since 2000, it was either 2005 or 2007.
Okay, so it's been a long time.
That the compensation has remained the same.
Yeah, Ms. Ford?
With the CPI, does the adjustment, can the adjustment go down as well, though?
Yes, it can.
That would be my only hesitancy with the CPI. I like the concept of a unbiased mechanism, but I don't think it would bode well for counselors who were in the position, and then they see their salary go down, you know? I just, that doesn't, that's the only problem I have with it.
I think although it could go down, I think the history suggests that it never has. I don't think we had negative CPI for a long time, and even when there has been adjustments in CPI, it's usually 2, 3%. So, I suspect that if it should go down, it would be in that range, too, so, but that's certainly a consideration.
One thought I have on this, particularly since the recommendation, is that it not even be until effect, until after the 2023 election. In terms of ballot fatigue, we can hold this one for another year, until, instead of the 2021 ballot, we could even look at the 2022 ballot, where we're going to have a higher city turnout anyways, so.
Yep.
Yeah, because we're not limited to doing charter amendments to any particular year.
No, we're not. Charter amendments can come at any time. The only difference is, this is a comprehensive review, but otherwise, charter amendments can come with any municipal election.
Okay.
But in an off-year, don't we pay still? Do we still pay for an off-year?
We pay on a percentage basis, on how many jurisdictions are participating.
So that, there would be a cost if we were to defer this, and it would be a lot more than this year, probably, because more than likely, the other cities and jurisdictions aren't participating in that election. So that would be something we'd have to consider.
I'm not sure I understood that, but I think, don't all municipalities have their election, all the major municipalities have their elections in November of the odd-numbered years?
Yeah, she's saying to push this to next year, on an even-numbered year.
No, is that what you said?
What I said is, it could be possible, if we were worried about ballot fatigue, that is an option we could look at.
Oh, I see, I thought you were talking about moving it to 2023, because that would still be possible, I suppose.
Yeah, just, yeah, just, I mean, I'd probably, I don't know, this is one that's been around a long time, I mean, for everyone, I mean, we make, what, $12,000 a year before taxes, so it's not like 2%, it's what, $20 bucks more, maybe a year? I don't know, something super cheap, but, you know, maybe, the only thing about the negative, I do agree with the negative, maybe some way we could put language that says, that restricts a negative reduction of the council pay, but...
But the underlying, or the concept is, just basically removing the salary or the compensation from ordinance and putting it into charter, however that might come out. You know, it would not have to be CPI, it could be adjusted in some other way, but, you know, it would just simply change it from charter, or change it from ordinance to establishing it by charter.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, sir. I agree with everything that the mayor said on why, you know, this should be changed, but I did some research here, and CPI over the last 10 years rose average of 1.7%. But I'm wondering if we could put in a specific percentage, like 2, you know? So then, it's a little bit in line with that, but it's a 2%, it always goes up 2%, 2% is this much. City councils just, it's uncomfortable to put an ordinance in place to raise your own salary. It's weird. But I like the idea of effective November 23rd, and putting in a percentage like 2 or 3, or something like that, and in 10 years, they can look at it again.
Okay, the next slide, please. That's the council vacancies. As we know, some of us went through this in 2015, was it? 13? Yeah, someplace there, where council vacancy. Our charter calls for a vacancy to be filled by the remainder of the council within 30 days. The committee is recommending that we increase that from 30 to 45 days. We'd just take a little bit of the urgency and the difficulty away from getting it filled in such a short time.
It is a bit of a whirlwind right now, with the 30-day.
So, but the committee felt 45 days should certainly be enough.
So, just a question on that, not being part of that process before, 45 days still fills pretty tight. Is there a way to, you know, no more than 60 days, or, I mean, again, because you want to, you want to do the process right, and again, I don't know how it worked, but I know it was complicated, so, is there, or does that, is 60 days too much?
Well, I'll give you my perspective on it. 60 days, no problem with whether it be 60 days or not. As you noted, the charter language doesn't call for any kind of process or procedure. The city council has had two vacancies, in 2001, and again, in 2013 or 15, whichever year that was. So two out of the last more than 20 years. There's no process or procedure prescribed or required by our charter or by law. It's possible that each of the council members could just simply bring a name forward, each bring a name forward, take a vote, and that would be the process. It could be done in a very, very short time. Could be done at the next meeting, for example. But the city has chosen to go through a process, not mandated anyplace, but the city has chosen to go through a process to advertise the vacancy, to receive applications, to interview, and then to have a discussion and a meeting. So if, you know, it could be done in almost no time, 30 days could be fine if there's no process or procedure. 60 days would allow more of a process or procedure, but I think in the last one we went through, we, I think we might have been comfortable if we had an additional two weeks, additional 15 days. The one in 2001, there were 22 candidates, or something like that, more than 20 candidates, because of advertising it. And so, it became really a difficult thing at the end of that for a decision to be made. So, given the experience of, we had two current council members on the committee, at least two former council members, and the feeling there with the committee was, 45 days might do it, but there certainly would be no problem with going 60. It's just, we want to move expeditiously, because business before the council is pending, and, you know, so we want to make sure we don't have only six members for some period of time.
Yeah, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so, David, just my recollections of the two, you know, one of them where there was a vacancy, it was in the lead-up to a coming election, and I believe the council appointed a former mayor to that council seat, who publicly said, I'm not going to run for that council seat, I'll just hold that spot, you know, perform that spot until the election, and then there'll be somebody new elected. So that worked really good because of the timing of when the vacancy occurred. In the one I was involved with in 2013, the vacancy occurred a week after the election had just happened to one of the newly-elected council members, and so, it was going to be, you know, two years before the next election for that council seat. So, it was a different way of looking at the vacancy, of trying to appoint somebody who was going to serve for two years, at least. So, it was, you know, I think, when and how the vacancy happens can mean there's very difference, and I think, you know, whether it's 45 days or 30 days, there's nothing about this charter provision that would require that the council take that long. So if it was a situation where a vacancy occurred in August or in July in the lead-up to an election, the council could appoint somebody at the next meeting if they wanted, even if the timeframe were extended. But, you know, as we found out in 2013, 30 days was not enough time to meet as a remaining council and decide, how, what process are we going to try to follow? And then advertise for the vacancy, collect applications, review applications, select applicants, to then interview, conduct interviews, and then conduct the selection. And particularly, in that particular one, because the vacancy occurred right after the election, this was all happening during the holiday season, if I remember right. We were conducting interviews right after January 1st, so right after the, so there's difficulty in there with the lack of business days in there. So, I thought that an extended timeframe would be good, whether it's 45 or 30, I, you know, I don't, it doesn't matter, I think, or 45 or 60, it doesn't matter, I think longer is better, because there's no requirement that the council do take all that time, just that they can't take more time than that.
Yeah, no, I would agree, and I think the recommendation of the committee of 45 is great, but I think that, having lived it in real time, it would be good for you to chime in and say, yeah, no, actually, 60 days would give us more breathing time, because you can anticipate what's going to be happening, or when it's going to happen. So, I would just say that we look at, you know, what is adding, you know, a few more weeks to the 45 do? I think about when we hire one of our appointees, we take at least 60 days in that process, and sometimes longer, to make sure that we've got the process right. So I think this is just as important. A good recommendation.
Mr. Fiverr?
Yeah, I was going to say, one of the arguments against going longer is, what does it do to the business?
You've just been going against me all night.
I know. John's happy, it's not him tonight. But, but it's, it's the due process for folks, for developers, for public hearings, and not having a full council for the public as well as those applicants.
Agreed.
And I think that, that's part of the pressure to do it soon, so we don't delay city business.
No, I, yeah, I agree, and there's obviously, there's a fine line.
Right.
But you also, you don't want to rush it, and then wish that you'd done one extra step, whatever that extra step might be.
Oh, trust, when it's through the holidays, I mean, we all pretty much had to give up the holidays, just to meet the timeline, and I get it.
So therefore, you'd have to get a whole bunch more money, so you need to, you know, it's just, you know, you pay more to spend more time, just kidding.
But that's, I guess, for the discussion, right? I mean, yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Ford?
I was just going to say that, when I looked at the numbers 45 or 60, I, you know, my question is, why would you extend it or not extend it, right? What would be the reason? But I don't, I like David's suggestion, because it reminds me of the ruling that we kind of came up with in terms of the judge, when we had that year, you know, we gave that year, but it's most likely not going to take that year, right? But it gives the person, or us in that case, or whoever's on city council at the time, that time that they may need, but they may, they don't have to take it. So I like your suggestion, actually.
Okay.
Okay.
Next one.
Next slide, please. This is the residency requirement for the municipal judge, and with this, you know, our charter language says, each judge of the municipal court shall be a resident of the city of Arvada. And you've just gone through this with the judge, and we would, the committee recommends just amend the charter to say, that would allow six months after appointment to become a resident, and additional six months at the discretion of city council.
Now, that language is in there for the city manager?
For the city manager.
And the city attorney?
No, it's not there for the city attorney.
So, maybe we should consider both the city attorney and the judge at the same time?
And we'll get there, because that did come up in the committee to say, so, how might that affect the city attorney? But, I was just saying, our recommendation is change the charter to say, yeah, six months to become a resident, so it would allow a larger field of applicants to be considered, that might be the case otherwise.
Mr. Jones?
Just a question on that, so, is the city of Arvada well enough to find for people to understand that while they may live in the 44 square miles, well, not really square, miles of the city boundaries, they may live in a pocket that happens to be in unincorporated Jefferson County?
No, the charter is not definitive to address that issue, and it's a problem that goes deeper than this particular issue, but...
I just wonder, I mean, do we, do we try to clarify that?
I'm not sure how that would happen, but that's why we have the attorney staff.
Yeah, resident of the city of Arvada, I think, is pretty definitive, that...
And that, and the term is used in other places within the charter, whether it's for candidacy for council, you know?
Okay.
What does it mean if the, somebody, the city manager, we require residency, does that mean also include one of those enclaves? And it's, I don't know, problematic to my mind, but...
Okay, just asking the question.
We could, we could draft up some language that you could review related to that. I also... We could draft up some language that you could review related to that. I also wanted to clarify in response to Mayor Williams' question. So there is currently no charter provision that requires the city attorney to live within the city limits. Now, as far as I'm aware, it's always been required by contract. So if we wanted to add that in, that would be another amendment, and we could add the six month after appointment to become a resident, if that's what you'd like to do.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay.
Okay, our next slide. Which is the initiative and referendum procedures. And basically, our discussion there has to do with how much time for initiative and referendum procedures. And there was a lot of discussion about this. And the question really revolves around how easy or how difficult should it be to petition for an initiative or for a referendum? And our charter says basically thirty days for each. Wording's a little different on them. And one, it must be filed within thirty days. The other time, a petition has to be signed within thirty days. So basically the same intent, but a little bit different language. And the committee's recommendation is to allow forty-five to sixty days, forty-five or sixty days for signature gathering. And, you know, be glad to respond to any questions or concerns about that. And also, Ms. Simpson or Mr. Marriott can speak to that since they were part of that discussion very much.
So some background on this is that the idea is that it goes really hand in hand with the recall procedures. The recall allows sixty days and a quarter of the votes cast in the last election, as we saw in the previous review here. And so this one was to discuss whether or not the referendum should go to forty-five or sixty because we were actually joined by someone who helped run the recall elections this past summer. And he even himself stated that a referendum would have been the preferable path, but it was deemed too hard. So they chose to try a recall instead of a referendum. And so if the referendum process was equal to, or seemingly feasible in comparison to the recall, that thus the more appropriate route, the referendum, would have been taken. So that's sort of the background on this. And so we had a pretty hefty debate. Some people feel that sixty days might have been too much because perhaps we run into too many people running too many referendums on us, and that therefore forty-five days might be a better compromise. And then the other half of the group felt that sixty days, you know, making it a direct match to the recall was more appropriate. So I don't remember the exact vote breakdown. I seem to remember it being pretty close. Yes.
I think so.
Yes, it was really close. So that's why both numbers got kicked over to us to make a decision about what might be the most appropriate recommendation for the ballot. Everyone seemed to be universally agreed, though, or almost universally agreed that thirty days was too short. That was a clear majority.
Yes. I think that was the bottom line, just saying thirty days was probably too short. Increase that either by fifteen days or an additional thirty days.
Yeah, someone who's not, who thinks that recall is not appropriate unless somebody's really committed malfeasance, you know, I don't like that people look at it and say, "Well, it's easier to try to force a recall than challenging the action that's really got people perturbed." So I favor it being the same, myself.
I agree. I agree to, Mayor. It'd be the same, one for simplicity for the voters. But I think they should be the same, sixty days.
I as well agree that they should be the same, sixty days. My only question then becomes, so for the recall, it's twenty-five percent of the votes cast. I believe for the referendum, it's ten percent of all registered voters in the city. Do we want to change that to make those two matches well, or do we just leave it ten percent of registered voters in the city for referendum versus twenty-five percent of ballots cast for recall?
I think I'd need to see the numbers from the city clerk's office in terms of what that means, sort of.
Well, I don't see that as something from the committee. So I don't know if we want to try to do this.
The committee didn't suggest anything in changing of numbers, just simply the timeframe.
I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even appear. That's, I wouldn't even bring that up because that was not on their recommendations.
No, it was something we briefly touched on, but it just wasn't sort of a conversation. We were so focused on this, we didn't get into that.
Okay, Ms. Ford?
Well, I, you know, I agree with you, Mayor. I think that they both should be the same. And I do agree with you that recall should be used when officials are doing something, you know, unethical or illegal. I do have a problem, and I did have a problem as one of the people being recalled, that you are being recalled for doing the job that you've been voted in to do, and that is to make the best decision, and to listen to your constituents and make the best decision for the city. And when you are in a position and you make that decision, and then, you know, you're recalled, that is not great incentive for people to want to run for office. And I think that we have to be careful of that as well, although I do think that a citizen should have the right to, you know, protest. The other thing that I would say, and again, this was not brought up by the committee, but I do think that we should leave it at twenty-five percent, because when you look at, you know, like you and I, we're in districts where it was a very small number that they needed to get. And, you know, I think that given elections where residents, not a lot do vote, which is something that hopefully we can increase always, is the number of people that do vote, because that truly makes the system work the way it's supposed to work. You know, I think that they should be pretty close. I think they should be the same.
So my only thought on, and apologies for going into it on the dais, but the ten percent versus twenty-five is twenty-five percent is of all votes cast. As you, Nancy, noted, you were unopposed in your last election. So there was a very, very low threshold for your particular district. Mine was double yours because I was in a competitive election. And so I almost feel that the twenty-five percent of votes cast actually penalizes those that were perhaps unopposed in their last election simply because it was a really low turnout, whereas ten percent of all registered voters is going to be a hard and fast number that, you know, you just have to achieve regardless of who turned out in the last election.
Well, like the mayor, I think I'd like to see the numbers.
I'd like to see the numbers, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I would have, I would have issue with it because registered voters in the district or in the state, in the city?
So it would be, so the thought, so right now, referendum is set at ten percent of registered voters in the city. And so I, my thought would be it'd be ten percent per district, but like that, again, we'd have to see the numbers. But right now, referendum is set, I believe, at ten percent of registered voters in the city, which is a fairly high threshold to reach.
Let's look at the numbers. Kristin's making a note. We've given her some homework.
I'm sorry, Kristin.
Then we'll do our homework. Okay, next, let's move on to the items that were not council.
Yeah. Okay, the next slide, please. And these are the committee identified issues. The first is, and next slide, is city attorney. The charter states in part, "Any agreement for compensation of special counsel should be made only upon approval of city council and prior to service being rendered." This was brought up by committee members who thought that the current provision that says the, in effect, the city attorney has to get authorization ahead of time to hire special counsel, that that might be a hindrance to doing business in an expedition, expeditious manner. However, the city attorney, Rachel Morris, informed the committee that the requirement for prior approval of special counsel has not been a hindrance to the work of her office. And the committee recommends no change to the charter regarding that. So it was an issue that we discussed, but there's a recommendation that nothing be done there. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Ford.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to say one thing on that, for those who recommended that. Don't we have a certain budget for each of the main people to spend without city council approval? So it would sort of be a moot point?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. Just was checking.
Okay, the next is the expanding the non-interference clause. The charter states that city council members shall not interfere with the work of the city manager, and that city, that council members shall deal with the city officers and employees who are subject to direction and supervision of the city manager solely through the city manager. The committee discussion centered around whether this non-interference language might be extended to the city attorney and the presiding municipal court judge. Again, the committee recommends no change to the charter, not needing, the committee did not find a need to impose the non-interference clause or to include that in the, in the charter.
Yeah, I've always viewed it that if an employee is an employee of the city attorney's staff or the presiding municipal court judge's staff, that they're still city employees that we can't interfere with.
Right.
I mean, I think that's.
And I think that was the conclusion of the committee to say it's not, not something that's to be important. Okay, the next slide, and it has to do with appointee residency requirements. Section six point one specifies a residency requirement for the city managers, we mentioned before. The committee recommends that all judges continue to be subject to the residency requirement as in section eight point one that we discussed, but allow time after appointment to establish a residency, that's six months and six months. The committee discussed whether there should be a residency requirement for the city attorney and recommends against changing the charter to require residency for that position. And city attorney Morris looked at this for other jurisdictions and found nothing in other charters that is, has that requirement for the, for the city attorney. And so recommendation is no change there. Okay, the next slide, please. Term limits. This was an interesting discussion.
The Mark Williams Amendment?
And actually, it could be extended to about four people over the last many years. The, this section four point seven states that a council member may serve in a council office for three terms, may serve, subsequently serve in another council office for an additional three terms. And therefore, an individual could serve for three terms in each of three council offices, district council member, at-large, and mayor, for a total of thirty-six years.
I will pledge tonight, I am not running for reelection in the city of Arvada, or for election for a district seat in the city of Arvada.
There's going to be an at-large open seat in 2023 as well, though.
I won't run for that either.
Well, it was introduced by one of our committee members that perhaps there should be a limitation. Sixteen years was suggested on how long a person would be allowed to serve on the council. And by the way, there is such a provision in a few other city charters that say total amount of time is X number of years. But the committee took a look at this and recommends no change in the current language. So the, and we did take a look at the incumbency of folks over the last many years, and there have been, I believe it's four of our council people who have served in excess of sixteen years. But out of something like fifty-two candidates, fifty-two elections, and people taking office over the, over the last thirty years, and only four people have served that length of time. So the committee recommends no change. And next slide, please. The office of ombudsman. The committee considered a charter requirement to establish by ordinance an office to receive complaints concerning the operation of city government. The committee does not recommend charter language that would require the creation of this office of ombudsman. The city might consider, and the committee recommends the city examine the possibility of creating such a position through administrative action. But this is one of those that I think would be a real difficulty, at any rate, to create in the charter a specific position. It's, it may be there much longer than people would ever want it to be there. So the committee is recommending not doing that. So basically, the committee, beyond its mission outlined by the council with aid issues, chose to take a look at several other issues and, for the most part, discuss them, but makes no recommendation on them. So there you have the recommendations of the council, and I'd be glad to respond to any other questions and.
Mr. McGough? If I could step in here, we're pulling in the rest of the committee. They've been patiently waiting and have not been brought in. We're letting them into the room right now. That was a mistake on my part, that's the challenge of not having Barbara Morker here. So my apologies to the committee, but we have several committee members waiting to get in. And they're being brought in right now.
Okay, good.
Okay. So were they able to hear what was going on by?
Yes.
Okay. But they weren't able to participate. That's probably the best place to keep all those faces that I see. But anyway.
But it may be appropriate, Mr. Mayor, to.
Is that the Katie amendment? I'm sorry.
Uh-huh, yes, that's the Katie amendment.
May be appropriate to see if any of the other committee members do want to say something.
I would love to hear if they have any input that they would. And first of all, I want to thank the entire committee, you in particular, Mr. McGough, for your spearheading this group. Your expertise and background was, was very, very important to us. And that's why we asked you to chair this, and you've done an admirable job. But certainly, if any of the other committee members would like to pipe in and give any additional input, and again, thank each and every one of you for your time, having served on one of these in the past. I know it's, it's a time commitment, but it's also a great opportunity to learn more or to remember more about your prior service or involvement in the community. And it's an important task, and we thank you for your time on it. So with that, if any of you would like to, to address us? Preston, are you? Anybody want to raise their hand? And go ahead, Mr. Fowman.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So I think there was an inadvertent and unintentional miscommunication because a number of us were under the impression that we were going to be periodically looked to by Mr. McGough to see if we wanted to add anything to any of the particular issues. And I feel a little bit uncomfortable not wanting to have every one of us now go back and rediscuss issues that you've already discussed. So I think, I'm just gonna say two things very quickly. I initially had my hand up until council member Marriott spoke about the issue of the majority in the elections. And let me just say that I strongly agree with the mayor and council member Marriott for the reasons that you articulated. For any other issues that I might have, maybe I'll put together a memo and share it with the council and staff so that we don't take up additional time here. Let me just say then to Anne, thank you for appointing me and appointing this whole committee. In my experience, and I've been involved in a couple of these, this was a far more diverse committee, and I mean that in the widest possible way. It was not just the traditional ways we think about diversity, but residents who have been here a long, long time, residents who are relatively new. I think the variety of ideas that we had were tremendously helpful. And everything about this entire process, from my perspective, from staff support to the committee discussions, to the recommendations, went very smoothly and went very well, and I'm proud to have been a part of it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and the entire council for letting us do this work.
Any others? Not seeing any desire. Katie, you're gonna stay silent?
Absolutely not, Your Honor. I wanted to just acknowledge that it's very refreshing and wonderful to see the Arvada City Council inviting in the community, as Ken noted, in a very transparent and open way. All of our meetings were recorded. There were robust and diverse conversations. And I'm very enthused to see our city is willing to take a document that was created in, I believe, the fifties or the six, I don't even know when it was created, a long time ago, and recognize that it needs to be updated and needs to be looked at and inviting the community. community into the process. And I see some of the members here today. It was nice to get to know my fellow Arvadans. I want to thank David Jones and the council for allowing me to serve you in this way. It was an honor and a pleasure.
Sharon, did you have anything you wanted to add? Dave Preston?
All to say ditto's, thank you.
Okay, that's the only faces I see, so I don't know if we've got other people who are on, off camera, but.
I had seen Brett Vernon on, and I.
Oh, yeah, Brett was on at one point.
He was on, and this is my sincere apologies for not looping you in sooner, and, but I believe you're confident with what was presented. So, my apologies to the committee, they were at every single meeting.
Great. Okay, thank you all very much. Mr. Marriott, do you got?
Yeah, just before we wrap up, I just wanted to give a couple of thanks to, to the city staff for sure, for doing just an absolutely stellar job with a large group and keeping focused on the task at hand and doing a great job of that. But mostly, I want to thank the committee members, Mr. McGough, Ms. Smith, all of those of you on Zoom who we can see on the screen and those we can't. It was a real pleasure to get to serve with this group of people, particularly, you know, gosh, talk about the, the all-stars of, of the city and people with just amazing perspectives. Everyone was, was free to speak up and did, and I learned a lot from all of you, and I just want to thank you for all your service, the time, there was a lot of time involved, a lot of studying involved, a lot of being involved, and, and thank you again for doing it, and again, I feel a real pleasure to have gotten to serve with you guys.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes, I just want to echo the sentiments of what's already been said by Mr. Marriott and the mayor. Thank you so much to everyone who served on this committee. It was 20 people, and it never became heated. We were always respectful, there was great dialogue, there was great sharing of ideas. And so, I really thought it was wonderful, you know? I was told going in, I was the vice chair, you know, why do, why do you want to do that? It's going to be really boring. I had so much fun. I can't even tell you guys, I thought it was a great time, and so, I really, really appreciated the insights and getting to know some of the other people in this city who I maybe hadn't met before and hoped to get to stay in touch with. So, just thank you to all the members of the committee for giving up their evenings and doing this work, to Mr. McGough for his fearless leadership, this is his third one in a row, maybe we'll get to see you for one more. And, and for guiding us through this process, it's always wonderful to learn from you, and to our city staff for their tireless work. You know, the, the public doesn't know just how much of their free time that the city staff give back in meetings like this where it's, you know, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And so, just again, thank you to our city staff for always being there, always be on top of things, and just generally being awesome.
All right, Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, I just, you know, not to repeat much more than what my, my peers have done, but I want to key on something that Mr. Feldman said, which is diversity of the widest sense. And what I'm really proud about this committee and even my fellow council members is, we really took the time to look at, when you say diversity of the broadest sense, you look at just how you view your community, what's your background, are you faith-based, business, residents, just up and down the spectrum. And so, when something like this comes in front of council, when you have such a diverse committee reviewing it, it just puts more power behind the recommendations because every layer of the spectrum and lens has been viewed, and makes me feel confident in what I can support behind this committee because of that, that view. And so, I want to personally thank you all, thank my, my peers for selecting those community members and for us to have the foresight to, to make it that diverse so that we have a good product that you all did. And again, thank you very much for all your time and energy, and it's probably one of the most important things that our community can do to guide our community forward. So, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you all, and we'll move on now to our second workshop item, which ironically is really part of a result of another citizen committee, our, our capital improvement committee that recommended both of these projects, and our citizens approved by, by a ballot measure to, to move forward with these projects. So, Mr. Devon, you're going to start it off?
Well, I'm going to start it off by introducing Director of Public Works, Don Wick.
As we wave goodbye to our committee members.
Well, good evening, Mayor and members of council. This evening, we are going to give our quarterly update on the bond projects. And one of the reasons I wanted to lead this off tonight, I know we're all been here for a long time, but I especially wanted to lead this off tonight to introduce to you Chris Lesberg, who was just appointed to our assistant city engineer position. Prior to that, Chris worked as our roadway design manager, and he is now going to have responsibility for project delivery. And tonight, you're going to hear about three of those projects, and those are three among quite a number of projects that we have to deliver out of engineering, and Chris will have the responsibility for ensuring delivery of those projects. So, without further ado, I'd like to reintroduce to you Chris Lesberg, now our assistant city engineer.
Good evening, all. Thank you for your time today. I'm here primarily to speak to Ralston Phase One, so thank you first off for taking the extra time in doing so. We also have the project managers for 72nd and Ralston Phase Two, which will follow right after me, if you wouldn't mind next slide. We, of course, here to report on those three projects. Schedule and budget are obviously critical points that we pay attention to, but obviously, there's many issues that come along the way with delivering critical projects like this or complex projects like this. We also do want to close with our communications approach that we try to fulfill on all projects, but again, particularly on these complex projects. Next slide, please. Thank you. Here, you'll just see graphically, everyone here is really familiar with the physical locations of these projects. Phase One being the most eastern portion of the Ralston project, Phase Two being from Yukon to Garrison, and lastly, 72nd up north, and we will be presenting in just this order. Next slide. First, just the overall status. We are about 75% spent through our construction funds available for the project. That doesn't necessarily reflect the progress of construction. I would estimate that at somewhere between 80 to 85%, and we'll get into the schedule here in a little more detail briefly. Here, within the photos of the project, we have two really representative projects of some milestones for ourselves. One product, one photo here is of paving that took place in mid-December. We were very fortunate to get the paving in, we did, to allow for full flexibility of that corridor for construction during the winter. And lastly, the most recent photo of the site a few days ago, just representing the median curve being in that will again help us or allow us to move forward with final paving in the next two weeks. Next slide, please. Here in teeny tiny print, you've got basically the milestones that we've, we've fulfilled and the ones we're looking forward to for the, the late spring season here. Since our last visit in late September, we were able to complete all underground work within the fall, just in time to pave right before weather rolled in. We were really fortunate, on the last day of paving on December 11th, we saw a significant amount of snow roll in the very next day, and temperatures never really returned to an allowable limit to pave. There was a bit of a surprise in that fall that I wanted to share with you. There were, there were three underground storage tanks discovered on the southwest corner of Old Wadsworth and Ralston Road. We were very fortunate again to find that those tanks were mitigated to appropriate and modern measures. When they were uncovered, we did discover with a little bit of investigation, they were emptied of any fuel and filled with concrete, making them inert. And again, we are unaware of when that action was taken, but, but we were happy to see that it lives up to, to modern mitigation standards. Of the three tanks that were found, two were left in place, and one had to be removed for construction of the storm sewer system in that vicinity. It, it was quite interesting, that, that corner, we believe, used to be an old service station, maybe gas station, and we also believe that Ralston Road at one point was two lanes during that timeframe, and so as it's widened, the roadway actually widened over to the top of those locations. So, it was quite interesting to find it in its orientation compared to the roadway. Within the winter, we've, we've tried to fight through some of the weather that we saw from mid-February to, well, just a couple of weeks ago, where we were seeing a storm roll in every three to five days, it felt like, and, and the temperatures were just quite the wavelength, and we've done a lot of miscellaneous work, a lot of sidewalk win in along the south. The Arvada Monument sign you've seen has made some slow progress over the last month or so, retaining walls gone, and a lot of concrete work as temperatures have allowed. And now, as of today, we've shut down Old Wadsworth, the southern leg, for a two-week period so that the existing asphalt that's still present can be removed and replaced, of course, with top lift paving all planned for next week. Striping will soon follow, and of course, we do have a lot of miscellaneous concrete-type items around. Landscaping, of course, is something that needs to be executed now that temperatures have risen, and, and there's a lot of paving, excuse me, pavers to be placed there at the intersection of Old Wadsworth and Ralston to complete those intersections. You'll note on this timetable that I have, Ralston Road Phase Two, NTP today. So, there is a bit of overlap between the two projects, but we are currently working through that. We've, we've been able to work with both contractors to come up with a little bit of alternative phasing so that they're not stepping on each other. Next slide, please. This is the same budget table that you saw in September of last year. A couple items of note, our current difference, we are expecting a $1 million overage compared to our initial funding, or excuse me, our initial budget years ago. Since the last visit here, our costs have gone up by approximately $180,000, and that is due to an Excel lighting agreement that was unbeknownst to me at the time, that we've now made a funding adjustments for to, to meet those costs. Next slide, please. As far as the steps forward go, with just a couple of months left to go, we're obviously coordinating, as I mentioned, with Phase Two. Before completion of the project, we, I'm working with Rachel within our group to get a communication survey out. We'll speak to communication a little bit later, but the one thing we really want to do is make sure that, that our approach is appropriate and, and we're really hitting as many citizens as we can in a timely fashion and with, you know, survey methods, or excuse me, with communication methods that really fit their lifestyle and their needs. We're slated for completion of construction on June 15th, and last but not least, we felt it fitting maybe in the fall of this year after the corridor's been opened and citizens have been able to use it for a period of time to survey, to, to ensure that what they were expecting and what they were desiring for the area is exactly what they got. With that, I'd love to hand it off to Phase Two, unless of course, there's any questions.
No lights on at this point.
Okay, well, thank you all for your time. I'd like to introduce Trang Train.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening, Mayor and city council members.
Good to see you again.
Yes, thank you. Next, please. So, for Austin Phase Two, in regards to the status, I just want to make one correction. Notice to proceed one is actually next Monday. There was a week of delay due to Hammond's trying to wrap up another project. So, as of right now, the latest start date per the RFP that was advertised to the contractor at the end of 2020 was May 3, 2021. And so, the construction will last for 24 months as our executed agreement that was approved by city council on March 1st. And the contractor proposes to start the work in regards to the utilities, water, storm sewer, also the traffic signal, so that they will be in the city's right-of-way or in the Purna Eastman that the city acquired for the right-of-way acquisition. And then, once all of the utilities are done, then they will begin to widen on the north side for approximately a year, and then they will switch over to the south side for an additional year. So, between notice to proceed one, notice to proceed two, and notice to proceed three, there will be an overlap of work just due to the temporary construction eastman that the city acquired for a period of 12 months only. And as you could see, with May 3 being the start day, that will be done in two years, which will put us approximately five to seven months ahead of the five-year bond deadline set by the RIS requirements. Next, please. These slides summarize the bid results that the city received back in January. We did receive actually a good number of responses from the contractor, and as you could see, we did receive six responses, and also, we have a summary of the engineer cost estimate being about $1.5 million, less than the lowest qualified bidder. And just based on the cost estimate, in some of the higher cost items such as traffic control or construction survey or the water line and also storm sewer, we're being very competitive just due to the rising cost of construction. So, that's the reason why that you see there's a large difference between the lowest bidder and the engineer cost estimate, which actually came from our, our design consultant that the city have been coordinating with within the last two years. In terms of the criteria for choosing the most qualified bidder comes down to qualifications and references. So, within their responses in the bid package, they did include references, and so, the engineering team did call and spoke. To a lot of the companies or agency that Hammond has worked before, and all of them gave really positive experience with working with Hammond. And lastly, the pricing, we could not just not choose Hammond just because it's so competitive. Next, please. In terms of the budget and expenditure, it's very similar to our last update, but in terms of the uses for the construction contract, as you could see, we do have a contractor onboard now for the $12,360,000. And then, I did break into the streetlights for the Excel agreement. There were a few lights that we did have to make up for the difference with the franchise agreement just due to the fact that we do need more streetlights to meet our current standards versus what is existing and what we're replacing. And also, in terms of the material testing, we did not have that in the contract just due to the fact that the team members want to have more flexibility and the control of the testers.
Hey, I've got a couple of questions. Mr. Marriott first, and Mr. Pfeiffer?
Trang, I have a quick question for you on looking at this screen. When we look at the budget, it looks like, you know, you guys were pretty close on your estimates versus what the expenditure is actually going to be on things like right-of-way and construction, and all that seemed to be about right, but the design is a dramatic difference from what was forecast versus what the actuality is. Can you speak to why that happened or why that is?
I am actually not sure when the city set the budget of $15.3 million, but for our contract, just for the right-of-way acquisition only, to negotiate with the landowner to research all of the title commitment, the subcontractor's contract with our design consultant, FSU, it's almost $700,000 already, and that's just for right-of-way.
And so, that was part of the design fee, not part of the right-of-way?
Correct. So, when, when we have the right-of-way, about $4.1 million that was budgeted versus the expenditure, that is for the costs to acquire the land and also to pay for the appraisal fee that the landowner has to retain services of, of an appraisal just to find out how much the compensation would be.
Okay, I guess I'm just curious, you know, we, we seemed to have a pretty good, pretty good shot, you know, pretty good idea of what all these items should cost, except for the design part, and, you know, I'm not griping about how much it, the design actually costs, but how did we not know that that's what it was going to be is also? Anyway, more, more of a comment than a question, really.
Sure, and also, I do want to add in regards to the design, in the original project, we did not have the streetscape element adding to, I guess, the original contract and also the original budget that was set back in, I believe, you know, 2017, 2018, prior to the ballot going out. So, obviously, with the support from ORA, with that additional $3.5 million, we were able to add into the project for the streetscape design and also construction. able to add into the project for the streetscape design and also construction. So unfortunately, that is add up. And also, just due to the fact that the industry, it was very, very busy, the design engineer, I believe, they, you know, they have the flexibility in choosing which project they want to work on. So as you could imagine, the fees, it's a little bit higher in about two years, let's say, when we first budgeted for it and then when we went out for the RFP. And also, zoo requirements as well. The subsurface utility engineering that was recently passed by the governor, I believe, back in 2018, early 2018. So we did incorporate that onto both phases of the project. So there was just additional laws and guidelines that we would like to follow. So again, there's a lot of things that, you know, as you can understand, adds up.
Right. Mr. Pfeifer.
Mine's probably the most minor thing, but streetlights. You said you're adding streetlights. So I was hoping, a couple of different flavors of it. One, you know, I'd like to understand that a little bit more because I'm not always sure of the safety reasons on why we're adding streetlights other than because out West, we don't have a lot of streetlights. So we, you know, why would we do it here and not protect the sky? Plus, the ongoing maintenance and operating expenses associated, every time you add, it's just adding to our bills ongoing. So granted, it's only $189,000, but over time, it costs us a lot more money. So I'd like to understand why we might want to add lights than what we already have today, if not remove some.
So the $189,000 is actually the streetlights and material testing, or material testing, which we test on concrete pavement, you know, the subgrade. I believe that was around $100.
So that was a majority of it?
Yes.
And that's good because you want to do that because you want to get good product.
Yes. So the streetlights, the difference was around $65,000 to meet current standards. So it's about 300 feet, and then you do 150 feet stagger where if the utilities allow you to meet that consistency of 150 feet. So in some areas of Ralston Road, we have, you know, obviously wider spacing than that, and so that's why we have to buy six additional streetlights and also for the installation as well.
Okay. And then the ongoing expenses associated to them, I'm sure. Utilities, I think Mr. Wick and I have talked about it, but utilities get, you know, when you have, well, how many streetlights do we have in the city? 40,000? I don't know. Lot. But and we pay, what, $15 each one? It's a, whatever the dollar is, it's a lot of money. That's why I'm just a little sensitive of adding to the bill if we don't need to. I'm not too aware of the safety reasons behind it, but...
Right. I think it's more just meeting the 150 feet. You know, obviously, in, when a developer comes in, right, they need to meet that requirement. So obviously, for city project, we try our best to meet that same requirement, too.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
This is a dashboard that RGIS Group have built for us. And so, as you could see, we have one remaining property left that the city doesn't have assigned memorandum agreement yet. However, we do have a verbal agreement. As of right now, we are working with the landowner and also his attorney, wrapping up some of the additional red lines that we have for the sign. And so I'm really hopeful to get this wrapped up as soon as possible. But in just in regards to the city taking possession of the property and also the contractor entering it legally, so once I have the agreement signed by the landowner, then we would put the funds into an escrow account. So we don't really have to wait until closing for the city to have that property considered to be city property in the meantime. So as of right now, in terms of right-of-way, things are going very well. And then in terms of the three properties that we had to file a condemnation just due to the fact that they were not responding to the city in a timely manner, three of them, we are awaiting for valuation trial. But again, we're hopeful that our condemnation attorney, working with the landowner attorneys, were able to settle before the trial dates, which is scheduled to be this summer. Next, please. So this slide just summarizes our milestones and also next steps moving forward. As you could see, our partner, Excel, and their subcontractor, Sturgeon, have started on the overhead conversions of the utilities to underground. They started that back in March. So Sturgeon is moving on north side, south side, whatever approach they think is the best. So they are working on that for the city. And the overhead to underground and also all of the new facilities will be done between four to six months. And then next, Excel needs to relocate the two-inch gas line on the eastbound lane approximately between Garrison and Everett, and that is about 1,200 feet, so that we could put in our 12-inch water line. And as I mentioned before, we do have one last parcel remaining for the right-of-way acquisition. And about two weeks ago, the city and our contractor did hold a virtual open house via Zoom, and that was held on April 15th. We did have about 20 turnout residents, some landowners, so that was a positive meeting just for city staff and also the contractor having an opportunity to explain and also tell and show them how to get additional information if they chooses to follow the project more closely. And as you could see, we do have a website, a phone number, and also a public information officer that the public could email Jen, and she should be able to get back to them in a timely manner. And as I mentioned earlier, our notice to proceed one will start next Monday. So that's all I have for Ralston Phase Two. I'll turn it over to Bill if there's or no additional questions.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers.
Good evening.
So to wrap up today with the last of the bond project, 72nd Avenue. Next slide, please. We're going to just touch base with these six categories here, and we'll primarily go into some of these briefly and some into more details, more specifically UPRR, and some of the right-of-way challenges as well. So those six topics, we'll spend a few minutes on several, and then we'll get more in-depth with Union Pacific and our timeline and our schedule. Next slide, please. What you see before you here is primarily the overall budget, and honestly, I can't really read the fine print in the upper right, but I believe we're hovering around 10% if memory recalls. And then you'll see on the bar graph before you, the triple-bar graph, the intent of this was really to show when this is going to kick off, when their design is complete for each of these three packages, and then really how much we're overlapping. So this indicates that we'll have contractors and the street will be torn up for a good part of the next three years. Obviously, we're going to make sure we have an open corridor for motorists and bicyclists and pedestrians along the way as well. But again, the intent here is to see that each package will overlap quite a lot. And with Packages Two and Three, we're really looking at about 23 months for each of those packages. So as we blend from Phase Two, or Construction Package Two into Three, there'll still be some flat work and some landscaping, irrigation going along with Construction Package Two while the big package, Package Three, gets underway. Next slide.
Ms. Millers got a question for you.
Thank you so much. I'm just, I drive that road all the time, and the traffic is incredible on that road, more so than Ralston Road, which we're dealing with now. Is there, do we have any plans for signage to route people up and around it? I know it's going to be a long route up and around or down and around, but it's a pretty heavily trafficked road in the morning and the afternoon.
When we get into some of the packaging, we're going to close down an intersection for 10 days. And when we close down that intersection, there will be a well-defined route that'll be delineated, and we'll have some messaging signs that indicate that, you know, take another route. So that'll just be for 10 days, but primarily, we'll have one lane in each direction open all the time. The traffic capacity will be about what it is today. So we'll phase that in. We'll build a new lane in Phase Zero as we did in Construction Package One. Traffic will shift to the north with that new lane, so the existing north lane now and the new lane will be the east and westbound traffic, if that makes sense.
Oh, nice. So you also have two lanes in both directions.
No, one lane in each direction. So one head-to-head traffic, we'll build one new lane on the north side, and then we'll reconstruct the south side, then we'll shift traffic over to the south side. We'll always have one lane in each direction until we have an intersection shut down to rebuild an intersection, and that'll be when we start detouring.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Simpson.
Just a quick thought, and we probably maybe already do this, I just want to make sure that we alert residents along the detour path that it's coming their way so that we don't get confused phone calls about why is there all this traffic on my street all of the sudden?
Well, we certainly have a lot of phone calls now, and we're working with our communications director, Rachel Curie-Wall, and she's been messaging all of these issues very, very well, and we'll certainly make sure that that is in the forefront of our activities as we get the construction started. That it?
Yep.
Next slide, please. So the ongoing task, right now, we've approved CP One. You all have approved CP One. And we're actually starting activity today, April 26th, with tree removal. So there's about 138 trees that we're going to remove along this corridor. We did a tree walk with our team last week, a week ago today, to try to identify which trees we could remove before we have right-of-way clearances. And right-of-way clearances are going slow, I might add. We've had a lot of offers accepted, but we haven't gotten the encumbrances from the financial institutions available to those parcels yet. So we're primarily going to start on the north side. And so CP One is well underway in terms of our planning, but our construction is yet to come. And again, after tree removal, we'll get into utilities relocation on the north side between Sims and Quail will be the first part of that. And so as that gets done, then we'll get other clearances from right-of-way on the south and further to the east as well. And then Construction Package Two, we've gotten our 90% design in. We made all of our comments. We've gotten those back to our consultant, and then we're waiting for the return on those. And then we'll get into our cost estimating, our OPCC, or Opinion of Probable Construction Cost from our contractor, and then we have an independent cost estimator that will also do a cost estimate. We'll compare those quantities in bid item cost and make sure we can reconcile those to come to a construction agreed price or a cap. And then Three, we're about 60 to 75% into Three realistically, even though it says 90's approaching in August. So we plan to have our 90% in-house in August to review and then get that turned around in a month or two. Next slide. So this is the budget you see before you. The pie chart's the same as Trang showed with hers. And so this is really an indicator of where we are in our budget. And you see in the design, we're really hovering around 80%. And so this is an alternative delivery package, so there's a lot more work that has to be done in the design end as opposed to a design bid build as in Ralston Phase Two. So we have a lot of coordination, so a lot more effort goes into our design, from our design engineer and coordination with SEMA, our contractor. So you see that we're about 80%. We're going to be tied on that budget, I'd say, for the remaining 20%. So that's an issue that we're looking closely at on how we can move items out of the design engineer's hands and maybe into our, to Alteeg, our owner's representative, and certainly when we get into construction, they'll have a large role in that as well. Next slide, please. So you don't see a lot on these pie charts, but if you look above those pie charts, what you will see is our existing budget for CP One and our projected budgets for CP Two and Three and our materials procurement. And I might add that the cost of steel is going up significantly every month now, so we're probably going to shift that procurement over a little bit to the, into CP Two and potentially go ahead and buy that steel now while costs are a little bit lower. And I will say that steel is going up at an accelerating rate, so it's advantageous to go ahead and buy that now and store it. We are waiting till we get to 60% design on the bridge, though. We want to make sure there are no substantial changes so that we don't buy steel that we don't need or the wrong steel. Next slide. So in overall schedule, as I just mentioned, CP One is underway as of today. We're identifying the trees that we can remove without clearances. And then, once we have those clearances, we'll get the additional trees as well. Right now, we're looking at possibly half of the trees of those 138 that we can remove within the right-of-way, and then clearances will come as we continue to move forward. So that's the milestone really we're looking at today. Next slide, please. And again, I can't see the orange from this distance with the light, so I guess I'm a little challenged on this. I think the last time, we had a laptop here, so it was a little bit easier to see, and I had expected that this time. So we're looking at CP Two to be coming along by memory in August for, again, well, starting in August as well. As I mentioned, we've already reviewed 90%. We're going on to 100% within the next month or so. So kickoff in August likely for that one. And then, again, that one's going to be about 23 months for final delivery of that one. And again, with substantial overlap between Two and Three. Next slide, please. And then the bigger package here, we're also looking at starting that, getting it kicked off in February of next year. We're going to start negotiating our PUC. We already have the PUC in place. We got that in place last October. We put that on hold. However, it's about 90% of what we need. We'll dust that off a bit. We'll take the hold off, and we'll just change some exhibits and some dates and a little bit of language, and we should be good to go on the PUC. And then we'll start negotiating the CNM agreement. That agreement is really what we need to have signed in place before we can actually start building Construction Package Three. And those will run concurrently. The CNM agreement's anywhere from six to nine months. Six months is what we're hoping for. And then the PUC is really a matter of two to three months. So they will run concurrently, so we should get those both easily done by February of next year. Next slide. So the right-of-way dashboard. We show that we're around 40% in this color coding that you see before you. In reality, we're a little further along than that. That 40% is based on checks actually cut. So we negotiated what you see in green there, quite a few offers accepted. What you see in purple is what we have closed, so we have access to those properties right now. The green, we do not. So while those offers have been accepted, we still don't have the clearances in terms of transferring the funds. So we have a lot of cooperation among the property owners. We just don't have the clearances in place. And then we have the blue, which they're still pondering or negotiating with us. Now, I might mention from this slide, you see the two larger parcels in blue there on the west and almost to the east, and that's First Church of Arvada, First United Church of Arvada and Lincoln Academy. And we did have a large disparity between the appraisals, especially on the church. It was around $350,000. And then we're about $100,000 apart on Lincoln Academy, but we're communicating with them. We're having a site walk on Thursday with the church to try to iron out some details, and hopefully, we can get a little closer to an agreement with the church on that one. The coordination's been quite good with Lincoln Academy as well, and communication and coordination is ongoing. Next slide. So as we get into these six items that you see here, varying timelines for each of these, the temporary bypass and shoe fly, this looks like we're low at 25%, but we actually go from 25 to 30 and then 90 for the submittals. And then the bridge, we're coming up on 60 as well. And then, once we get to 60 on the bridge, we can procure the steel. We feel comfortable that we can move forward with that and potentially save $100,000 on the steel. So that's where we are now. The last component of that, and I mentioned the PUC earlier, last component of that is actually the roadway component of CP Three. Obviously, once we get the bridge constructed for the railroad and we get the temporary bypass in, we can start building the roadway and all the improvements, the Lincoln Academy and Blackbird Farms, which is just to the north. Next slide, please. And then the final slide here before I'll turn it over to Jaclyn to talk about our communication strategy is really some of the concerns along the corridor. As of late, fencing has been a pretty hot topic. People want to know what fencing they're going to get, if they can stain it, what they can do to that fencing, the types of posts. And I believe, as the council remembers, the mandate was steel post from our last meeting concerning the sound walls, I believe. the mandate was steel post from our last meeting concerning the sound walls, I believe. And then we have a few people that are, again, asking if the road's going to be closed, some odd topics about irrigation, and a few people have asked about safety. They're a little concerned with safety, and I've assured them that the safety will be improved once this is done. There's no doubt in my mind on that. So with that, if there are no other questions.
I think you're good to go.
Okay, I'll turn this over to Jaclyn to cap it all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could go to the next slide, please. So I just want to speak a little bit to our communication approach. You heard that as a common theme through all three projects, and just as a reminder for all of our standard approach to projects, we obviously create a project-specific page on arvada.org. On that page, there's an invitation to sign up for our email contact list, and we provide a standard background and common project updates. So in the case of the project email lists, we're maintaining a list of over 240 email addresses for the Ralston Phase One and Phase Two projects, over 280 email addresses for 72nd Avenue, and we have a pretty high open rate, 50 to 80% of folks who actually open and receive those emails. Of course, there's other tools as well. Trang spoke to the public meeting we held for Phase Two for kicking off construction for that project. You know, in that case, we sent out over 1,300 mailings for areas along the corridor. And while we had somewhat of a small turnout, we think that's because of well-established expectations moving, rolling straight from Phase One into Phase Two. So we'll continue to maintain this, including the project hotlines and dedicated email addresses for both projects. Next slide, please. Just wanted to establish that, of course, we provide consistent communications through our communication manager for infrastructure, Rachel Kurriya. And each project not only has our project managers that you see here today, but of course, our contractor teams have their own PIO. So through the direction of our communication manager, we make sure that our teams are putting out consistent communications and everything's under her direction. And then, of course, the contractor PIOs can help distill down complex project-specific information and provide that content to us to push out through our city platforms. So next slide. I hope to round it out with some takeaways and some things that I hope you conclude with tonight, is that Phase One is on track for June 2021 completion. We're all looking forward to that and continuing with not only the outreach activities to take that feedback and apply it directly to Phase Two and our community communications, but obviously, close coordination between contractors between both phases of the project. Utility relocations are ongoing for Phase Two, and you heard about the notice to proceed occurring on Monday, so that Hammond can begin the roadway construction work. 72nd Avenue, design is progressing from 60 to 90, although you heard about CP Three, the largest third package, and the work going into that, and how our coordination with Union Pacific Railroad will continue to be closely coordinated because that has the largest impact on our project delivery timeline. So with that, I just want to thank the council for the opportunity for our team to come speak to you tonight, and a special thanks to our project team, who is very dedicated to getting this work done for us.
Well, it's exciting. It's obviously a long, drawn-out process, but it's good to hear things are still moving forward in a very positive way, and we're excited to see these projects come online. It's going to take longer than any of us would like, I know, but it's moving in the right direction, so thank you.
It feels good to have some updates to report.
Yes, yes, it is, yes. Very good, thank you all. Okay, how much time, Mr. Devon, do we need for the third workshop? What, I mean, before Ms. Miller starts asking questions, for the actual presentation of the...
I believe that can be accomplished in five minutes.
Okay, very good. Well, then, is everybody okay with moving forward versus taking a brief break? Okay, Mr. Devon, you're on the clock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. There has been a discussion of how we will regulate and enforce tobacco and vaping, and you may recall that we had discussions in February of 2020. At that particular point in time, there had been changes in federal law, and there was going to be consideration of similar changes to state law, and we elected to see what those changes would be all about in order to determine the course of action that we felt was the appropriate course of action to take. It's been a year. Here we are in March of 2021. We have a better understanding of the changes to federal and state laws and how we can modify our ordinance in order to fit into that and make, you know, what would make the most sense in terms of actions that we could take. We've had discussions internally with the police department, who oversees the enforcement arm of what we're proposing tonight, as well as with the city attorney's office in terms of how our smoking ordinance, which was first adopted in 2006, could be rewritten in order to be consistent with the changes in federal and state laws. And then also, whether, how we were going to, and whether or not we were going to do any licensing, and whether or not there was a need for licensing from that standpoint. So as we have looked at all this information, what we're proposing before you tonight through this workshop is to first amend the smoking ordinance. This would make these amendments, would make the smoking ordinance, the city's smoking ordinance, consistent with federal and state law. If you go to Page Two of the report in front of you tonight, there's a summary of the revisions. First of all, we would look at adding some definitions to the revisions about self-service display and tobacco products and things like that. First, the other one, very big one, obviously, is the section that would prohibit smoking and revise the age to 21. That was the big change in the federal and state laws, so we would make our ordinance consistent with that. We would do the same thing in terms of revising the title and language of Section 38-305 to reflect age 21. And then the distribution section would again be revised to age 21, and then there would be new provisions prohibiting self-service tobacco displays and sales, which is again another feature of the federal and state laws. So by making these changes, we would make our ordinance consistent with federal and state law and also make it obviously a lot easier to enforce, which is the next section that we're bringing forward for you tonight. One of the issues that we wanted to deal with was how can we effect enforcement without, if possible, without implementing a licensing program? A licensing program would be something that we would have to consider if we didn't think we had the capacity to enforce this ordinance. And through working with the police department and their civilian operations unit, the liquor licensing control administrator would be the team member that would be responsible for enforcement. So this is the person that goes around the city and does enforcement around liquor. So liquor stores, liquor establishments, things like that, to make sure that our, all the ordinances and state laws and so forth around liquor are enforced to only serve people age 21 or over. What we determined through working with the police department is that this position had the capacity to be able to enforce the same ordinances around sale of tobacco and vaping products. So this person would be able to go through all tobacco sales and vaping sales businesses throughout the city and do a proactive enforcement inspection, and then also be available, so that would be once a year, and then be available to react to complaints or anything that we, that we hear from, from people that either see or hear about illegal sales to people under the age of 21. We believe this is the best approach because this can be accomplished without having to do a licensing program. In the narrative in the report, we talked about the idea of a licensing program would have to be implemented, which would create additional, the need for additional staff to administer the licensing program. And then some sort of a fee would need to be exacted on all the small businesses, the vaping and tobacco shops and all those kinds of things that sell, sell these products. And we felt if we could avoid that, that would be the better option. If we had the capacity to do that, that would be the better option. We took note of the fact that the state is also going to conduct an enforcement program, and the state is going to do that through the Department of Revenue, and that they would be exacting fees on businesses throughout the state in order to help fund the licensing program, and it would also involve an inspection program as well. We don't have a lot of details on that. They haven't allowed, they haven't provided a lot of details. We know that they're scheduled to start an enforcement program in July of 2021. So what we believe would be the appropriate strategy to follow here would be to start with our proactive inspection program that would conduct the inspections once a year and then have the capacity to react to complaints, and then also coordinate with the state as well, once they get their program up and running. If this is an action that the council is interested in, what we would propose to do would be to notify the businesses that conduct the sales of tobacco products and vaping products, let them know that the city council is interested in considering an ordinance, and explain the ordinance to them, and then present the ordinance to you after that process is completed. Of course, we would certainly react to any questions or information that those businesses might present to us, and then present an ordinance to you in the approximate July, August, or so timeframe for you to consider. And we have to answer any questions.
Ms. Miller.
Actually, don't have a question, because Mr. Devon and I spoke at length about this already prior to the meeting, but I just wanted to say I support this ordinance. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Fiver.
I'm surprised we're not going to go in there and say they can't smoke inside the facility. We should have brought that up.
Have you spoken about that before?
Oh, well, too bad we weren't all involved in that conversation and get to know more about that. So I guess I'll follow up with you later.
Okay.
So it's only a workshop.
I'm sorry, what's the question again?
Vaping inside.
Vaping inside the stores.
Facilities, yeah.
The vaping, okay.
Anybody else? Yeah, I'm comfortable with moving forward with the ordinance. I like the approach that is being recommended, that we not do licensing at this juncture, that we look to see what the state's going to do. I assume our liquor enforcement officer might use the same techniques that they use for, you know, occasional sting operations with explorer scouts, things of that nature to, you know, do that. If they've got a situation where they think that there's some violate, potential violations going on.
Yeah, what I believe would happen, Mayor, is that if they're, if we're reacting to a complaint, Devon, one, then they would utilize police explorers or somebody that looks considerably younger than most of us in this room to deal with that issue.
For at least one of us, it would take a lot of makeup, so. Okay, very good. Any other questions? No? Good, let's move it forward. It's got to be, we have to have this adopted before November of 2021. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Devon?
No, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Very good. Good work, everybody. We stand adjourned.